I would like to call tonight's meeting to order. We're going to start with any agenda additions or deletions. There are none this evening. The first thing up for approval is our select board minutes from 3:17:25.
We approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Please take a moment to look them over. All of us in favor of approving minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. I think we have an adjusted. And this amount, the $89,000? That's correct. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
We'll ask questions after we get a motion.
Okay.
I move it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Great. Question.
The East Wallingford Fire District, I know ARPA funds were recommended for purchase of a fire truck. Is this the only payment to them, or did they get another earlier payment?
They had some turnout gear that they got paid for earlier, so they have had other payments.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, where is the Misty Meadows Spring Water?
In the town clerk's office.
Okay.
Question, this is just me being new and I don't know all the acronyms, B-C-B-S-V-T?
Blue Shield.
Okay. Makes sense. And the Marcel Oil Line item, is that oil for heating this building?
It's diesel fuel. Would that be for the trucks?
For the trucks, probably.
Just for the trucks? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Truck.
All of us in favor approving the pay orders?
Aye.
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 So moved. So do we have, looks like we're on to, do we have a road commissioner this evening?
His mom truly, he might not make up.
Okay. I didn't have a chance to look at things properly, so, okay. All right. So it looks like Todd Morse of 270 Parker Road has requested a speed sign be posted on the road to hopefully slow down motorists. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Okay, that's a road crew to install a speed sign or to order a sign if they don't have So I know in the past, there's been discussion on these kind of matters.
What did Phil say?
I don't know. Did Phil say anything about this?
There's not one on my road, but...
I'd like to hear Phil Baker's recommendation.
Nash Drive, too. We also got another request today about a speed sign on Nash Drive.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So I think, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong...
There's not a sign there.
But, oh, okay. So, you want, okay.
You can just go right into him.
Okay, and then we'll come back to this? Okay. And talk?
Yeah.
Hello, this is Kathy Luzader.
Hello, this is Michael LaCroy from V-Trans.
Hi, Michael. Welcome. It's good to hear from you this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're right now moving into V-Trans Traffic Signal Upgrade Project. So, Michael, it looks like, I've read over your email to us, and the town does have a concern.
Okay.
Would you like me to share what it is?
Sure.
Okay. So it looks like V-Trans is designing this intersect project based on a three-rod right-of-way? Is that correct?
Well, for, I guess, for the side streets is what you're referring to?
So, here's our concern. We see, we know what three rods is equivalent to. It's equivalent to 49.5 feet or 24.75 feet based on each side of the road's center line. We are in process of getting a sidewalk project done on School Street, and that is based on a four-rod right-of-way, which is determined with deeds and two surveys.
Okay.
So, my concern is, if the town signed the V-Trans agreement, does that mean that the town also agrees to Route 140, including School Street, being a three-rod right-of-way?
No, it does not. The, I mean, what it'll do is, I will confirm that with our right-of-way section to verify that that's true. But, my answer to you tonight is no, it does not lock you into that. The work that's being done as part of the signal, isn't really affecting really anything outside of the curb line and in the sidewalk. So, for our purposes, for this project, we just wanted to make sure that we weren't affecting private property owners.
Why?
And we're not. So that will have no bearing on whether or not the right-of-way is 30 rods or four rods.
Okay. So when, so are you saying that the project will not involve any three-rod or four-rod construction? It's just going to work on the signal itself?
So, no, that's not what I'm saying. On Depot Street, we were, the finance and maintenance agreement is an instrument to allow the town, or to have the town allow us to work on Depot Street for the first 30 or 40 feet. And the reason for that is because we needed, because for us to put in a new traffic signal, we needed to rework some of the existing drainage around the corner at the library.
Okay.
And we need to be able to just replace, put in new pipes and new catch bases for Depot Street. So, that, the finance and maintenance agreement just says that the town will allow the state to do that on the town's property. Nothing else will change. We're going to, you know, we'll reconstruct the sidewalk and the curb line and whatnot, but we just need to have access to the town's right-of-way on Depot Street for like 30, probably closer to 75 feet, just to get in there and reconstruct that drainage.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. This is Rob Barker, a select board member.
Yes, I'm wondering, are you going to replace or reinstall any of the sensors that tell you that there's a car there?
Yes. We are putting in brand-new vehicle detectors. We are also putting in new, let's see, vehicle pre-answers. The fire department used to have a direct connection to the signal from their fire station to essentially make the signal turn red so that they could have free glow.
Yep.
That has broken. It turned under. Part of the signal work is going to be re-establishing that.
Great. Yeah, I was here when they did it the first time, last time, Rob.
Yes.
So, will we restore the road service after you surface, after you install these sensors?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Will you restore the surface of the road after you dig it?
Oh, absolutely. It will be in the same condition, if not better. And also, you'll have fresh sidewalks and fresh curbing and fresh push buttons and sidewalk ramps as well.
Great.
Kathy?
Yeah.
And Ann Awad has a question.
Yes, I'm following up on the new sidewalk improvement after you've installed the new posts. As Ms. Luzader mentioned, we're on the threshold of a major sidewalk project running down School Street to that intersection, and we don't want the two projects to collide. We want them to coordinate well. So, how will you ensure that?
Well, I've already been in contact with the project manager for the sidewalk project. I will reconfirm that, you know, what the project schedules are. Right now, we're looking at the signal project being done probably in 2027, and I need to find out from the sidewalk PM when his is going. I don't know that off the top of my head. But we've already coordinated to make sure that the two projects will join physically. So there'll be, there should be very little gaps or interruptions.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. You are not extending the existing bump outs in this project, is that correct?
We are, let's see here, I'm looking at the, for the most part, they're going to be pretty close to existing. Yep.
Pretty close. So, in what way are they going to be changed?
In front of the library, we have to pull the curb a little bit closer to the south, and really that's to accommodate some of the signal equipment. So there's probably going to be, well, I don't know for sure if there's going to be a loss of space. I don't believe so. It's just going to be more defined. We've already talked to the folks at the library. We met with two gentlemen that represent the library, and we've run all this stuff by them. They seem to be happy with everything, as long as we are able to communicate during construction where folks can have access to the library construction.
Okay.
So, there's going to be a little bit of a shift of the curb in front of the library, but everything else should be pretty much in place where it is today.
Okay. Okay. So, I think right now, we'll wait for you to talk with the project manager about the concerns that we have?
No, the, right-of-way, we're going to get some confirmation on the four rod.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
About the three-rod versus the four-rod matter.
Right.
Yes. So to get some confirmation on that. Okay?
Yep. I will do that this week and get back to Sandy with that information.
Okay. That sounds good. Wonderful.
Okay. Any other...
Do we have any other questions?
I don't have any.
No?
I'm good.
There's no other questions? Thank you so much for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Have a good night.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. So that is the V-Trans Traffic Signal Upgrade Project update for now. More to be determined later. Why don't we go back to the 25 mile per hour speed sign on Parker Road? So, what I was about to say was, it seems that we would like to hear from Phil before we make any decisions. Am I, does that sound good to everybody? Okay. So, to, also to be continued?
Okay.
And now, moving on to our honorable mentions. The select board would like to thank Justin Jankis for assistance with the annual town meeting, meeting recording for the website, and volunteers who are preparing the monthly newsletter for distribution. Do we have public here this evening?
I'm here for actually something on the agenda when it comes to the boy in the boot. Is there going to be a chance for comment, for me to comment during that? Or do I have to do my public comment now?
I think we're okay with comments during, I think we're okay with comments during that. Okay?
I do have a public comment back on what you were just talking about.
Sure. Yes.
If you sign that agreement with them as a three-rod road, I think it's going to hose you, excuse my wording, but, when it comes to building your sidewalk. Because if they're telling you it's a three-rod road at the intersection, I think precedence is going to keep you a three-rod road all the way up the road.
They haven't taken 140 West...
We're not, I'm talking this side.
No, they won't take a road unless it's a four-rod road. They won't take a three-rod road over through Timmits. They don't have it. They can't make it. So, this is a four-rod road, and it's not going to...
He's written in writing that it's a three-rod road. And if he continues with the three-rod, if you continue with that agreement...
It's always been a three-rod road. It's always been a three-rod road.
All of the information on this road says it's a four-rod road.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about Depot Street.
I'm not even, I'm worried about the sidewalk.
That's the only one that they say is 30 feet and three rods, and that is a three-rod road.
It's both intersections, both sides. It's both sides according to that thing.
No.
Okay. But either way, just, if you agree to that 30 feet, or three rod, I should say, I think you may hold, may give you complications in the long run.
Thank you for your suggestion. We're concerned about this as well, and so we are definitely being, I guess, duly cautious about how we proceed with this matter. Anyone else have anything to say about that? Thank you very much. So, we are on to, looks like we have representatives here, Wallingford PTO request for newsletter submission.
I love talking to the public. Okay, I'm Jane Hamlin. I work at Wallingford Elementary School, and I've been involved with the PTO for many, many years. Took a little break for a couple of years, but back there. We have prepared a letter that we would like to put into the town news letter. It is a letter soliciting public donations. We, the state has closed down several of our classrooms, and we've had to rearrange this year because of PCB levels. We had a trailer out there that served its time for 35 years or more, and it fell into disrepair and has been removed. And we are in the process of writing grants to eventually build a pavilion to be used as an outdoor classroom, to provide different experiences for our kids, alternative educational opportunities for our kids, and eventually, and also to put in some kind of storage facility, whether it's one of those sheds that you get. We have zero storage in our building. We have tables against walls. We have, everything's just stored out in the middle of everywhere. It's just, but anyways, we've prepared a letter that we would like to put into the newsletter to ask for public donations, to be added towards, you know, to see if people in our community would like to help us.
The outdoor classroom is a three-tiered project. It's a, the grant that we're writing encompasses education, recreational wealth and health and wellness. And so it involves playground, it involves the outdoor classroom space, which is where the trailer used to be. It involves educational programming, it involves wellness program programming. And so the tiers that we see are, we have been working for about four years now raising funds, and we have enough money for the first tier, which is a piece for the health and wellness and recreation for the kids. It's a piece, a new piece on the playground in conjunction with the PE teacher of what do kids need to work on. He suggested upper body strength, so we have done the first phase of purchasing this piece of equipment that'll be coming and getting put up this summer. And then we're moving on to the next stage, which is the outdoor storage and the outdoor classroom space. We have a temporary tent to put up this year so that we can actually use the space. We've already purchased the tables and the desks and some things that are needed out there. But the plumbing and all that stuff is already out there, so we're hoping that with the storage building, that we can get one big enough to put a small bathroom out there so kids can, you know, use that when they're out there. So the second part of the stage is the storage, possibly the storage and part of the outdoor classroom. And then the third stage would be the finished building. It'd be an open-air pavilion type with a possible slab where it can be used as an outdoor classroom to bring programs in and to, you know, use it within our teachers, using it for their science and STEM and, you know, all kinds of things. And eventually have some recycling and composting and some, you know, garden boxes and things that kids can really have hands-on learning out there. So there's like these three stages. So our letter is out to the public. We have been writing with, working with a professional grant writer, Carrie Becker, who Jane and I have been working with her, and we have written this grant that she's putting, you know, we're going to be putting out there to the places that she knows where to go to look for, you know, support with these kind of projects. And, you know, our fundraising efforts at the school with the PTO, we've done various things. We try to focus on community project kind of things, like our pie auction and dance, our Christmas craft fair, you know, things like that that involve families and community to raise some funds. So we've kind of been working with different things to try to do that. So this letter is just one to go out to the public, to the community, the businesses that, you know, just if they would like to be another part of helping this project along. So, that's where we're at.
And the other part that we need to pursue is, we have been told that where the trailer has been for the last 35 years is in the floodplain.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're that close. It's a whole story above our classrooms, but it's in the floodplain.
Yeah.
So, we also need to know that before we acquire all these funds to do this, because there was a building there, it has the plumbing and heating, do we need to go to planning commission, zoning board? Is it, what we, could be grandfathered in because we're replacing a building that was there? We just need to know what steps to take, who to talk to, so...
So there's the two things. The letter for, we'd like approval for the letter to go in the town newsletter, and the second thing is advice on, like, where do we go, because we need to start doing things like permitting and things like that.
Erica Burner.
Yep.
The design administrator.
She would make that decision, whether it was grandfathered or had to start new?
Oh, yes.
She would also let know what steps you need to take.
And she knows all about the floodplain because her house is in it, too. And...
Is she the lady that owns the sign?
They are pretty strict about all of this stuff. If you have to have a permit, you do, you know.
So is there a phone number for you?
She knows.
Thank you.
She knows.
Okay.
You know, we're doing, we're thinking about building in the floodplain, too.
Right.
There's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Right. And we weren't sure whether...
Each situation's a little different, so I would definitely talk about it.
Now, what's the nature of the letter? Are you going to ask for donations, period?
Yes. Would you like to hear the proposed letter?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. She's got the proposed letter. Let's see. Dear Wallingford neighbors, Wallingford Elementary School is more than just a building. It is the cornerstone of our community, and the Wallingford PTO has big dreams for our little school. We are in the early stages of planning and fundraising for improvements to our playground to meet the physical needs of our students and the long-term goal of constructing an outdoor classroom to provide enriching and alternative learning opportunities for our students and perhaps adding a play structure to our pre-K play area. But the PTO has hosted the craft fair, sold gift wrap, held pie auctions, and received donations from area businesses and community members. We recently began the process of writing grants. The PTO has been very frugal in our spending for more than two years in the hopes of being able to purchase the first piece of equipment for the playground, which we did this week.
We did this week. $12,000.
The piece of equipment was selected with the intention of it being incorporated into our physical education program. We are so close, but the freight charters have put it slightly out of our reach. I need to alter, this was written last month, so I do need to change it a little bit there. We are reaching out to members of our community to ask for your support to help us reach our first goal. I'm going to have to alter this because I have now, I buy apologies for not being fair, in raising $3,000 to purchase and install the first piece of equipment. All excess donations will be placed in escrow for the bigger projects within the next few years. The Wallingford community has always been so supportive of our school. Your generous donation, no matter the size, will make a real difference in providing these opportunities to our students. You can contribute by sending a check to Wallingford PTO, blah, blah, blah. Our donor recognition plaque will be displayed once the pavilion is built to recognize the generosity of our community members. By partnering with us, you become a vital part of our mission to educate and enrich the lives, enrich the lives of our students. The Wallingford PTO is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and all donations are tax deductible. Thank you for consideration and support.
That's very nice. That's good. I'm wondering, how does the school board feel about that? Have you asked, talked to them?
You will have to talk.
Oh, no, that's Mill River, right?
It's through Mill River.
You don't even have that.
We don't have that.
Well, the superintendent is aware of, and assistant superintendent are aware through our building principal, who's an active member of the PTO. And, you know, they've had conversations. They're aware that, you know, we're working on the project, and I think it's been, the school board members have been alerted that we're working on this.
I like the way you're doing that, and when, why not have like one of those thermometers where...
That's our next project to work on.
And you could put it in the next newsletter, in the next newsletter like that. The other thing I'm thinking about is, we've set up like a sinking fund, money for the boy in the boot donation is just going, and they stay there. And I think, what else have we got? We got the newsletter.
Right. I think they have some. But I think the PTO has...
Yeah, we have all of our own accounts.
We have our own accounts.
We have our own accounts. We're federally, what is it, 501(c)(3). Tax.
They're already...
They got it.
So, in my obituary, I can say, please give donations to Wallingford Elementary School, right?
Yes, the PTO.
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 Okay.
And the school principal has kicked in some district funds towards some of this.
So you're a completely different entity. I got, I got.
We have separate school.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, it's a benefit of the school.
Is it unusual to have that kind of letter in the newsletter? Because I was surprised it was a separate request. Is it?
Is it unusual, unusual to have?
We have it done before.
Okay. So this would be the first time putting in a letter like this. I know I'm not against it.
No, I'm not against it. Yeah, I didn't know if it was something that we did normally or not, so that's why I'm asking.
I don't think anyone, before, I don't think anyone before has asked this before. First time.
Are you doing like a GoFundMe or anything like that, or is it just like send in a check?
We're doing grants. We're writing grants.
No, but I'm saying just for the contributions from people from the town.
You know, GoFundMe, the money doesn't all go to the project or the person. They take a percentage, so we're going to try to stay away from that and kind of make the community, you know, feel like they're a real big part of it and have the thank-you board with everybody's names and that kind of stuff on it.
Yep.
That's cool.
So, I know...
I move, we approve, then put in a letter, their letter in.
Second.
And I don't even know if you need our authority. And I don't even know if you need our authority.
Um, me, we're told me need it too.
Julie felt very uncomfortable putting it in without, without asking you. And I, uh, we just gave it to her.
I understand her hesitation there.
Open it up to others.
That's why.
But you are unique.
Yes, yes. That's an understatement.
I say it with low.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If we can just get the information out.
Here's also the floodplain manager, his phone number.
Okay.
Um, because he'll have some different information. Erica will have local zoning, but he'll have, he'll tell you about, um, replacing a building that's already been there and whether it's grandfathered.
Erica.
Erica is with zoning.
What's your last name again?
Burner, B-E-R-N-E-R. And then that's Kyle Mead, I'll show you the floodplain.
Great. Thank you so much.
And so if you have any further, maybe in the future, just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Watch the project grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye. Appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we are now moving on. We are to town sand shed and solar projects. Tom?
So I can talk to the solar. I don't know what order you want to take it in, but do you have a chance to read?
Do we want to start with the solar? Does everybody go with that?
Sure.
Yeah, so you, you, I think you saw the pre-read. Did you see the pre-read?
Yes.
Okay, so, but I mean, the essence of it is, uh, we'd like to take away the, some of the schedule risk that, that accompanies the sand shed. So the thought is, let's put it on the ground, um, take it off of the sand shed roof and put it on the ground, uh, which would kind of take the, the scheduled risk away. So the CPG could potentially be extended, or we, we think we can extend that, um, for another year. But then there's also the other risk, the other financial risk relates to the, the federal credits. So right now, the, the federal credits are still in place, but under the current situation, that could change at any time. And it is substantial, um, so it's 30% of the cost. So we, uh, we're looking at the northeast corner of the town garage site, which would also be a south facing array. So the sand shed, um, if you recall when we, we had the RFP back in the fall.
Did you say northwest or northeast?
Northeast.
Northeast.
Yeah. And I think it's on the summary. So, um, when we did the RFP originally, we opted up to both the, the sand shed or the town garage. Most of the bidders vote, uh, bid on the sand shed, which is a south facing array. Um, so based on that, um, we were looking at the northeast corner, which would also be a south facing array. So we think we would be able to leverage that exist, that existing RFP and potentially just have the bidders update their bid. So you're going from a, from a rectangular array, um, on a building to a rectangular array on the ground.
Did you talk to Steve Lampier, the, the road foreman about that idea?
So we talked to Phil, um, Phil Baker. He, he raised a concern about the, um, about the culverts that are stored there and also some trucks and things. So we would have, those would have to be moved. That's the, that's the. To another position on the, on the town, on the town garage site.
Also, we don't own that land.
We don't own the town garage site?
No.
Well, it shows that here the, um, the solar array is actually on the land that we own, but it's right next to the, to the, where the rest of the town garage is.
The, the property line goes right through the town garage, comes out about halfway north and south on the, on the east end.
Have you seen the, have you seen the diagram?
No.
Yes, it's on, it runs right in.
Oh, yeah. This, oh, that diagram.
That's the correct diagram.
Yeah. This is, okay.
Yeah, so that shows the.
That's where you're looking for.
Yeah, so this, uh, Jake prepared this, this based on the current plat and he, I think he researched it.
I see. So I, I.
Yeah.
So, uh. The whole town garage is on.
Yeah, I know. It's just right through the thing, yeah. So most of the town garage is on. Yeah, so my, my understanding is that we do own the town garage site though. Um, to your point, a lot of the town garage building is on the, on the lot. So to, um, to Phil's concern about the culverts and other storage back in there, um, I was looking into, uh, the possibility of an easement onto the other lot. I talked to the Public Utility Commission and I talked to Green Mountain Power to see whether, because one, there's two questions. One is, will the rescue squad give us an easement, number one? And number two would be, if they do, does our CPG, certificate of public good, which is site-specific, work on an easement on another property? So I, I talked to, in the past month, I've talked to the Public Utility Commission and Green Mountain Power with a number of different questions. That's the, they answered all my questions to my satisfaction, except that one. They didn't say no, they didn't say yes, and I think it's just because it's complicated. So I talked to Erica at that point and just about the, the positioning of it, and she said that although there's a 10-foot setback there for alternative energy, they, you can move, you can work within that setback. She said that we do own that setback. This array would be on a, on a mounting system which has pole, you know, the one pole, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be four poles, it would be like two poles. I don't know how many poles in the middle, but one line of poles. So that could potentially be pushed close to the, close to the, very close to the boundary line. Um, the question is, you know, like the fact of south facing, the way it's shown on the plat here, you know, one end would be very close to the property line, excuse me, the other end would be close up to the other property line where the rail retract is. So anyway, so the thought was, and Sandy's already drafted an email to, to go to the, um, four stall, installers who bid on the, the shed roof. Uh, we wanted to talk to you guys first before we send it, but the idea would be ask them to update their bids. I did talk to one of them, um, the gentleman who helped us submit the CPGs back in November, December timeframe, and he gave me an idea, because he, it was quite surprising to me actually. I asked him how much more it would cost to do the, the ground mount, and he said that it would cost a little bit more, but actually the labor for working on the roof is considerably more than the labor for working on the ground. So there is the cost of the, of the structure itself and the metal and everything associated with it. In his case, it was a 7% bump in cost versus the original one. So I went back to the four bids that we got the first time around and I just conservatively said, okay, what if, what if it was 10%? Not 7, maybe he was kind with the 7, but what if it was 10%? And the, the prices, based on the original prices that they gave for this, for the roof mount with a 10% increase would give us a range of $40,000 to $60,000 for the ground mount array. So the, we talked to Julie about the, the funds that are available, the 57,650 that the Energy Committee had requested originally, um, has not been used. I guess because the, the heat pumps were used, we used the building fund for those. So the proposal would be, if it does fall, I imagine you'd probably pick somebody near the lower end of the cost range potentially, when you look at all the factors involved. So that being the case, it would look like we'd be able to do it with that amount of money. The, the big difference is that in terms of the, the advantages of taking this approach is that the schedule risk associated with the sand shed. So even if we did extend the CPG into next year, the thought is that we probably need the sand shed to be functional throughout next winter, right? So we're still kind of just kind of resetting the clock, although we can do some of the planning around the sand shed and market, market.
You know when the sand shed was built?
Um, probably like 30 years ago. I think I talked.
Ninety-seven, ninety-seven.
Yeah, so pretty close, yeah. Yeah, so Charlie gave me a lot of the background.
I don't think we need a new one. I don't think it's compromised that much.
Yeah.
Huh?
Another topic, but either way, I mean, I think you take, you're taking the, the solar panels off of it at this point, moves that project forward. It also gives you some flexibility on the sand shed if you decide to go that way. Um, gives you some flexibility then, so.
So did you say you didn't get an answer on whether the solar array could actually, if we got the easement, could the solar array actually be on the easement? Cause I'm just thinking that would give you, if you shift it, could shift it more that direction, that would give you more, might allay Phil's concerns about having some storage space there.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, I was not able to get that, that answer. I think it's probably because it falls into, you know, legal.
Complicated.
Array.
And how the easement's written would have an effect upon what they can say as or not.
Yeah. But I think, you know, what I, what I realized after I talked to Erica and then seeing the example of the ground mounted array that the, the one gentleman sent me, I mean, at that point, you're pretty much, you're not really encroaching that much. So unless we're storing stuff on the adjacent lot, not that much storage room is compromised. The width and some of the, um, the one guy that I did talk to said that he would probably go with a slightly different panel if he did a ground mount than on the roof mount. Actually a, a more powerful panel, um, which would shrink the size of that overall array a little bit. Um, in his case, it was, it turned out to be about 14 feet wide and of course it's going to be on an angle. So if your post is in the middle and you're, you're right up against the property line, you're only encroaching about seven feet in and it's going to be elevated. So you can, if it's culvert pipes are really the issue, they, you know, Phil's not here to speak about it, but we, we still need to clarify with Phil, but they could potentially be underneath it. I would rather not, you know.
Right, right, yeah.
But.
And so the culvert pipes are right there, but there, and there's also more like behind the existing sand shed, but it looks like we're going to, if we build the new sand shed, we're going to lose that space where those culvert pipes are too. So, um, you know, I, I think it would be worth asking Phil about that.
Yeah, definitely.
So ask about culvert pipes.
I did, was talking with Phil a week or so ago. I'm here, if you guys decide to do the sand shed, I'd volunteer to write your RFP for you. So, uh, but from my understanding, Steve and the road crew are not real keen on losing their storage space that they have, because they are going to lose behind the sand shed. If the sand shed goes up, now that, all of that stuff that's back there has to go somewhere. And that's where it would end up going. Vehicles, you know, private vehicles park out there.
Are where they, are where they want to put the solar.
Right, that's where everybody parks. Fuel tanks out there.
This, this whole conversation started because we need a salt shed. And then we started thinking, well, if we make a sand shed, we can put panels on it and, and, uh, and started thinking that way. But I, I don't buy the, the report that the guy wrote up about how fragile it is.
I don't know. We got, we got two, we have two engineers reports that, that sound very dire. I like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Who else do we get an evaluation?
The roof presses are in real bad shit.
Yeah, I know.
And they're, you know, a heavy snow load will collapse it. They said they wouldn't work underneath it, just to work.
I'm thinking repair rather than replace though, and maybe do a hoop roof on the existing poles.
Well, that's, like I said, that, that's up to you. I'm, I'll write the, the RFP for you, however you want to write it. That's up to Stephen or to Stephen Hill.
What we have to do is decide if we want to do something and what, what it is, but there's so many variables in this. And this, the salt shed really is at the end of its life.
Right, yeah. But that's not a hazard. I don't know. My concern is that the first engineer's report said like we should rope the area off.
Yeah, yeah.
That was four years ago. The most recent engineer report said like you shouldn't have anyone underneath there unless they're in like a covered vehicle. So I mean, they might be somewhat alarmist, but also we're kind of at a liability risk if something happens. And, and we've got, we're sitting on these reports that say it's unsafe.
I was writing, I probably would say that too. Cover my own butt, you know, but, uh, I, I don't, I walk under there all the time.
I, I think I kind of go with what Glenn is saying. Some significant concerns have been raised about the salt and sand shed and I, I, I myself am not convinced that repair is the way to go. I think it needs to be replaced from everything that I've heard.
While we stray, we were talking about the solar, um, options.
Yeah.
If, I mean, things are disappearing very quickly at the federal level. We could wake up in the morning and they've axed solar incentives. So if that happens, is the project dead?
Well, it's going to cost more money. So based on the, the 40 to 60 and a 30% of that, it, the, the range of, the credit range that we're talking about is 12 to $18,000. So I think it's, I think it's significant enough, right, to, to make it worthwhile to move as quickly as possible in this. I hear what you're saying, I, we definitely want to work with the, the road crew to make sure that we're not causing a, a problem for them. Just in order to save, you know, taxpayer dollars down the road. But let's get, let's figure out everything right up front where we put it, make, put it in the right place.
It seems like that's where we're at right now, is to find out if some sort of solution can be made with the garage on, on losing, losing space that they have felt.
So is it Phil, is it Steve? So I talked to, I talked to Phil the one time that we, with Sandy and I talked to Charlie. Um, I haven't talked, I haven't caught up with Steve yet, so, I mean, whose call is it? Should I, should we meet with all of, ever them, all of them and try to find a spot? I mean, what's your suggestion?
Well, I think Phil's the road commissioner, so he's sort of.
Steve's the foreman though.
Steve's a foreman.
Every day.
So I think you do need to speak with Steve too.
Okay. So we'll try to meet with them. And then assuming that we find a reasonable place to move those, maybe, I don't know if they've seen this diagram or not, so maybe it's just a matter of them seeing exactly what's being frozen, the size of it.
Yep.
Um, because if they're picturing it being, you know, the size of the sand, the current sand shed and just moving that over there, then I can, I can certainly understand the concern, but it's actually going to be much smaller than that. But, um, so if we, if we work with them to find a location to move that, that stuff and it's, at that point, is it okay to send that letter to the bidders and just get an updated bids, just to keep the process moving so that we have information for the, well, I forget now, Sandy, when we said we would ask for that back, I think it was about a month we gave them or something, a few weeks, but, um, I don't know. So we can adjust that. I don't know if we'll have it for the next meeting or not, but.
Okay.
We can, we can. Is it okay to go ahead and send that letter then?
I think once things get, um, resolved with the garage.
Sure.
With the road crew on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Does anybody else agree with that?
Yeah.
I have a question. How big and how wide is that?
Uh, so the, and again, it could change based on the different companies. Um, this one, I think it, I don't have it on the diagram.
Are you going to say long, not really wide?
Yeah, I think it was 30 feet.
30?
Um, and don't quote me on that. I can book it up for you, but if it was on here, it's not.
There's a spot down at the ball fields between the, it just kind of popped into my head. Between the tennis court, the old tennis court, basketball courts and the new basketball court. There's a stretch of green strip that might be big enough to do your solar panels if they're only 14 feet wide. Just food for thought.
Uh, they're longer than 14, so it's.
No, I mean.
One, well, why is 14 feet wide? You're right.
Yeah, and then 30 feet long, but there may be a big enough strip right there between the tennis court, the.
Basketball.
The basketball court and the old where you're skateboarding and stuff is. There might be a green strip in there wide enough to do that. Just.
Yeah.
As shown on the drawing, this is longer than 30 feet though. I'm just like sort of estimating.
Yeah, that's why I, I need to look it up. I forget exactly the length of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, just was thinking of an alternative in that.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, I went down and looked at the rec field too. I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about. But, um, I mean, just in general, I mean, we did, the, the select board did talk about this at one point, um, a couple meetings ago. And decided we'll focus on the town garage rather than the rec field. I think it came up again. I think Justin actually brought it up and talked about it. And I think that, you know, after going down and looking at the rec field first, I think it makes sense. I mean, the rec field is a nice, you know, green setting, whereas the, the town garage is kind, is kind of like buried a little tighter in an industrial area. So it's, I mean aesthetically, it's just, you don't see it as much back in there as opposed to down at the rec field.
And I think you'll have less like, um, recreation traffic. I mean, I would hate for someone to get hurt or for there to be damage to the panels because it's too close to people recreating.
Yeah, I think it's good to have that, that backup.
Yeah.
Um, I think the first preference would be if we can work with the road crew to find out, you know, is this reasonable in terms of your, what storage you have planned for there? And then if not, then maybe we can take a look at that, that spot a little closer.
Okay.
So, um, I'm, I'm in favor of repair of the, of the sand shed rather than replacement.
Before we talk about sand shed, anything else on the solar array?
Oh.
It's just a thought and I don't want you to scream and run out of the building. You've done a lot of work on this and it's yet another idea. I've seen those large, um, square panels that are up on poles or columns and they rotate and follow the sun. Would that be feasible? Because it might raise them up so that the employees could park right under them.
Yeah, so I, so, um, and I don't have all the information on this, but it is a, it is a little bit of a premium cost wise to do that. And the thought was that, one of the thoughts was that we can, it's very easy to leverage the existing RFP. Cause it's just, just by moving that rectangular array onto the ground. I think if, if the height is the concern that, and again, somebody needed to check with them on, but the height, we may be able to raise the height of the array. So if that's the objective, you may be able to do that. I don't know for that site, then this is something that the solar installers can tell us is they can, they can determine how much benefit you'll get in terms of just a south facing array versus something that will follow the sun. It may or may not be worth the extra cost, but it's a good thought. And actually Erica had mentioned this, the, the smart flowers that kind of close up, which I think will be really good down at the ball field. If we had to go that, that direction, um, the smart flowers, they can, they follow the sun like you're talking about. But then they also close up and, and go down into their little stamens.
I heard they weren't quite as efficient as, as the stationary panels. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. So, yeah.
They're pretty pricey too.
Yeah.
But they're cool.
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, neat technology. But again, I was just thinking in terms of, you know, the costs and, you know, what we are, the work that we already have around the, with the solar bidders currently. So on the back of the page, I don't know if you want to do it, the sand shed now, or if we have time to do the, the, just the, we want to just review the, um, the heat pumps. Because it was, you know, we had talked about it a lot last year. Um, it's just now that they're in. Um, so one of the, the big question as we were thinking about this last year was, this is an old building. So when you talk to the experts at, um, efficiency power line and Green Mountain Power, they would say, oh yeah, there's, the new heat pumps can support a building by themselves. There's, there's buildings much further north than you that are being built with just heat pumps. But of course, those are new buildings, right? So it's a lot tighter. So the big question all along for the heat pumps in this building was, is it going to be, is the building going to be able to, is it tight enough? That the heat pumps will, will work on their own. So to try to get that, that answer, so we asked that the, um, the thermostats for the oil burner be set back, um, to 52. I think when you, with the analog devices, that the lowest setting is 60 and then there's a little bit of space to the left of that. So we can't guarantee that they were at 52, but they were somewhere between 52 and 60. And the, the experts on the energy committee know more about it than I do. Tell me that if you have a delta or a difference between your primary and secondary heating source of at least eight degrees, your, your secondary heating source will not kick on. So the, the heat pumps in the, for the most part of the building are set at 68. I think Sandy might have hers a little bit lower. But for the most part, they're 68. So we think we had that delta from the beginning of February through, uh, March for the last two months. We did have some very cold days, um, in February, if you remember. It seems like a long time ago now. So we, uh, towards the end of March, we asked everybody who works here full time. Um, I think the only person I missed was, uh, John Tiffany. But we talked to Mary Ann, to Erica, to Jill, Julie and Sandy. And everyone, uh, for the most part, felt that it was, it was comfortable working environment with just, with just the heat pumps running. Um, two, two, um, exceptions to that. Um, Joe had mentioned that on some colder mornings, um, when they first came in in the morning, it was a little too chilly and they bumped, they bumped up the, the heat pumps. And that, that seemed to fix the problem. When I talked to Erica, she mentioned that she felt like there was a draft coming from the, from the window. So, uh, we looked at that, uh, the last, uh, we were here at the last energy committee meeting. And we noticed that there's tape around that one window over there. Uh, so I know that the, the paints are caulked when you did the outside last year. But, um, and I know these windows are intended to be open and closed. So I don't know if the store windows are as well, but, um, we could potentially caulk that window if that's the issue. The other thing we noticed is that the, the louvers, at least the night we were here, were facing away. So in that case, the heat is pushing towards the outer wall. And of course, you know, the way these things work, it's a, it's a cold return back to the door. So if that's the case, the cold air is flowing right past Erica. So she may have, and I haven't had a chance to follow up with her yet, but it may have been either, it's either the window leaking any cold air on her or the cold return. And I don't know if these things are, do they rotate or are they on rotate mode for the louvers or are they standard setting? Do you have any knowledge?
They don't rotate.
Okay, so that, so I think that's probably facing that direction. So it might be the cold air return. So anyway, I think we can work with the, with the staff to kind of optimize that for next year. But, um, the recommend, the recommendation at this point would be to, you know, do what we can with the window. Um, if that's, it continues to be a problem for Erica, we can adjust that now. And then work with the, the town staff in the future to kind of optimize the settings. We think that there might be a more optimal setting since we have a, a three day weekend. You may, generally they say heat pumps, you just keep it at one setting and, and that's where it runs the most efficiently. And that's what they've been doing, which is fine. We might be able to get some benefits by dropping it down over the three day weekend. But anyway, at this point, the, the recommendation would be, um, since we, we believe that it worked pretty well, would be go ahead and put the, the second floor heat pumps in, because if you recall, we, that was part of the original plan. We took it off to kind of simplify things and just focus on the first floor, which I think was actually good because it gave us an opportunity to kind of test the concept. But the thought will be now that that has worked well, look into the, the heat pumps on the second floor. We did get some initial estimates on costs from that, uh, back at the time when we were first looking at it. Don't want to hold anybody to those now at this point, because the time, time has passed. But originally it was like in the 25, 20 to $25,000 range. Uh, there were much more expensive options as well, depending on the design up there. But then at that point, if, once we have that in, the thought would be again, the oil burner made it through the last winter. We did the maintenance on it, made it through. We'd like to do that, keep that again as a backup. But once we make it through next winter and we confirm that, that the heat pumps work upstairs to, to keep that space comfortable and downstairs. At that point, I think that the oil burner becomes obsolete and it's just a, it's just a frozen pipe risk at that point. So we could potentially drain it at that point and, uh, and decommission that, that piece of it. The other piece of it is that I did talk to the gentleman from Green Mountain Power who gave us the incentive, the fossil fuel reduction sum. The first time around is about $10,800 or so for the first floor heat pumps. And there's, there are, uh, additional incentives available on that, um, if we, if we were to do the second floor heat pump. So he needs, he's asking for the, the oil, um, consumption since the first floor heat pumps went in. So Jill's working on that. We'll get that to him and then we'll get enough rough ideas to what's that incentive will be. So we think that with the, with the money, the original money that was set aside, we'll maybe be able to, if things go well, we may be able to get the solar array. And, um, potentially a big chunk between that and the Green Mountain Power incentive, get a big chunk out of the second floor heat pumps as well.
Sound good?
Okay, so we'll start, we'll start drafting an RFP then for the second floor heat pumps. And we'll also meet with the road crew, try to make sure they're all three of the, Phil and, uh, and Steve are both there.
Yes.
For that discussion, identify where that stuff can go. If there, if we can find a satisfactory place for putting that, the culverts that are there now, um, then Sandy, we can, we can send that email to the, to the bidders. And get some, get some firm numbers for you for next time or the time after that depending, the timing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, I'll, I'll hang for the sand shed discussion if that's okay.
Okay, sand shed.
Yeah, sand shed.
Yeah.
I, uh, I'm favoring repair over, uh, replacement for two reasons. One, repair, we don't have to go through the four feet floodplain thing. We're just repairing it. And two, replacement is going to be over $400,000 and we're not going to get the money from, from the public. They're not going to, I mean, at least there's a risk about that. If you go to, if you go to a, a bond now, uh, I was talking to Erica today. She'd be in the double digits with, with, uh, new, new, uh, with permits. And there's, she's only had eight since the beginning of the year. So there's not a lot of activity. I don't think there's a lot of, I'm just wondering, it, you know.
Well, I mean, I mean, my opinion is that if we were going to go the repair route, I'd love to get an engineer and who would say, okay, you can repair this. Cause right now we've got two engineers who say you can't and it needs to be replaced.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with another one if you want.
I mean, I just, I, you know, I mean, I realize engineers probably are overly cautious in general. But it's kind of hard to second guess them, you know, when you've got a potential hazard in the town. So, um, yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't know if anyone knows an engineer who's got a little more relaxed view on it. But, um, I, I would, I would be uncomfortable going with the repair route when we've got two reports from engineers that say need to be replaced.
Yes, they're filled the same way.
And I know it's, it's, I mean, it's a huge challenge to get the funding.
Yes.
For, and I think it's, it's on us to, to, to try to have to, to make a good case for why it needs to be done.
If we go bigger than, you know, it's, it's close to half a million dollars.
Yeah, I know. I mean, but, uh.
A bond, I think they want you to pay it off in five years, you know, I mean, it's not, uh.
I don't think it necessarily has to be five years.
Bonds can be longer than five years.
Yes.
Huh?
If we got a bank loan, it would be five years, but a bond could be longer than, than.
Longer.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I like, I know Tinmouth is doing one or has done one.
They did one.
Castleton as well.
Yeah.
Bridgewater just put out an RFP for theirs. Um, so it's, it's happening. Um, I don't know if they're getting state money or what, but, um.
Right.
I don't know. That, my opinion would be that, that we need to keep pursuing the idea of replacing it. If, if for some reason the bond failed or whatever like that, then, you know, we'd have to take, we'd try to reinforce those trusses or whatever.
Then we go back.
Even if you didn't replace it, you still have to replace your salt shed.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
The only thing that's lining that up is the salt.
Yeah, that's, uh, 14 by 24.
12 by 24, yeah.
Huh?
Well, according to this drawing, it's 12 by 24.
I think it's got concrete, at least on the bottom half of it, there's, it was poured.
I think it's just a slab. I think the walls are.
Slab?
Yeah, I think the walls are wooden, steel combination, whatever holds it together.
So that, that is a doable financially as far as I'm thinking. And, uh, Phil said if we were going to do something, he'd, he'd like to do it a year from now. When it's, when it, before winter's coming, so it's practically empty. And so we, we don't need to do something this summer. But, uh, it's a, it's a year off, even if we.
Right.
Go right, go right with it.
It will take you an entire, it'll take you an entire year to get approval and the money.
Right, well, yes.
By the time you put it out to a.
I have a question with, I didn't see any of the engineer reports and was it just the trusses that were a problem?
Yeah.
Or is it?
Oh, they banged into a few poles, but you know, they're big poles, most of them, and they're treated, you know, uh, they look solid to me.
So some of the poles are crooked. I don't have a, I think the main thing is the trusses. I mean, some of them are just broken. They're just, they're just hanging there.
They broke, they broke because they got hit with the load.
Well, I think in, in, in Rob, um, what he's talking about too is, um, maybe he could even possibly, if, if the trusses were the problem, you could see, look and see what it would cost to replace the trusses. Probably wouldn't be $400,000. But like I said, I don't even know what shape it's in at all. I'm just thinking, you know.
I was, I was thinking of a hoop roof, like, like they had, uh, agricultural things.
I mean, you could, a lot of different.
And you could, you could get 25% or 30% more.
If the poles are good and you can replace the trusses, I know you could replace those trusses for a lot less than a half a million dollars or. I mean, I don't know what they'd get for a hoop roof, but it's just something else.
Okay.
I think the, Phil was saying, I think they looked into the hoop roofs and they were more expensive.
Yes.
It was a cost one more.
Like the, you get that fabric covering.
All, all those hoop things.
The hoop roof, yes.
And you stayed away from it because of the solar panels also wouldn't, with the hoop roof.
Right. But even before the solar panels came in.
Right, but if you move the solar panels to a ground mount, you could look at the hoop. But I think Phil said it was more expensive actually to do it that way.
Yeah, cause even before the solar panels were any part of this conversation, that was dismissed. If I remember correctly.
He said, he said they didn't like the hoops.
Because of the cost and the durability and everything.
They do make, uh, other kind of trusses steel, uh, but still have, well, they don't take up as much room as, uh, those wooden ones. You know, so you can make your pile higher, you know. But those, those, uh, Morton buildings is cavernous, I mean, you can put a lot of sand in there. I mean, that would be nice, but I, I just wonder about people willing to pony up.
Well, that's, that's, that's definitely a risk.
Yeah.
And, you know, I said, if we, if someone had a lead on an engineer who could give us a third opinion on the building and answer the question, could it be repaired? Then I think we could look at that, but right now we don't have that.
Right now, all our engineer reports say replace.
Yeah, so, um, but yeah, I mean, it's a big ask for, calling for taxpayers to pony up.
Yes, it is.
Which could be, you know, could be 500 grand, you know.
Yeah, it's going to be a good discussion for sure.
Well, if you guys figure out, decide what you'd like to do down there.
Yes, I mean.
Let me know. I'll be glad to write the RFP.
We've been talking about this for so much.
Too many options, so.
Right.
You've got way too many options to try to write an RFP. So you kind of have to amongst you folks decide what, in Steve, in Steve and Phil, what you want to do. But I'll be glad to.
I would like to talk to the town guys too, you know. I would like to go talk to them about the sand shed as well and the salt and their perspective. They go there every day.
Yep.
You know.
I think they're the ones who, um, have originally proposed replace. Is that correct?
They proposed the sand shed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering.
They've been asking for that to be replaced for like, and you.
Okay, let's get.
And, and they want, they want to do the salt sand shed that's combined. That's their recommendation.
Yeah.
Have we, have we talked to the other towns that are doing these projects? Anybody from the?
I know we talked about talking to them.
Oh, uh, Tinmouth.
I don't know if we talked.
Tinmouth, Castleton, I know.
Castleton is building a, um, a wood, a kind of a wood post, uh, pretty standing.
So without the walls? No, they're just like, sort of like what ours looks like?
Yeah, pressure treated boards like a, you know, big cow iron type.
Are they in a floodplain, do you know?
What's that?
Is theirs in a floodplain?
I don't think so.
All the reason I know that a friend of mine is actually, uh, going to build it this spring.
Okay, okay.
So, for, so he just, we were talking about it.
One advice another town gave was don't go grant process.
Don't go, yeah, what, yeah, what?
Don't do that.
And, and that was another, cause I, I'm also thinking about to Rob's concern, like people are going to be like, wow, this is a big price tag. And people are going to ask.
More to go through the grant process because of all the requirements the state put upon them for the grants. That it went well beyond that they just paid for it themselves.
Yeah.
Huh, wow.
Is the piece of advice when I went to one of the, the, um.
Beat ups or something?
Kind of like the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yes.
That it took a lot longer and cost a lot more than it was worth.
I didn't realize that the town crew was the genesis of this, you know.
Yeah.
So that, so that's, I'm, I'm, I'm for replacement too. I mean, there's just.
Right, that there was, I'm trying to remember, cause this was right as they first got on the board and they started talking about it. So it's a long.
It's been a long.
That there was, and actually there was concern about if we tried to do the repair, that it was going to cost almost as much.
Right.
That's what Phil said. That it was to the point.
That's not cheap either.
Right, that it was, might as well just go for it.
Yeah. Well, I, I saw a beautiful Morton building over, you know, and I looked at it and I said, oh my God, this is what we have.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Mark, do you have any other information on the, cause we talked, it was all, we've always been talking about elevating it and then.
Well, the last thing that I think Phil talked about, I talked to him, I don't know, or actually I talked with you the other day also, was they were going to put vents around, vents, I guess you could call them in the side.
Right.
Only go up four foot on the side instead of doing the, instead of building it up four feet, put it the level it is, cause Steve does not want the rain blowing in.
If it's full of sand.
What's that?
How is it going to vent if there's full of sand?
State of Vermont says as long as you put drains in the side, you're fine in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Well, that, that would be wonderful if we didn't have to go four feet.
Right.
That kind of, I mean.
We're going to find, if that's true.
But they say that when the state of Vermont says that, are they talking about a sand shed or they're just talking about a foundation that could have that? Cause this is going to be full of stuff, so.
That's what he, he said, he mentioned that on the call that we had. That if you, you, you had options, you could either put in your, your some, you know, your four foot deep, raise it four feet. So we had, you basically, if you don't put the vents in the side for drainage, it has to be two foot above floodplain, which is a foot and a half or something above where it is now. So you're going to have to raise that four feet on the ground. On the ground, or you could put vents.
I mean, it seems like that's a heck of a lot simpler that, uh.
It is, I'm not exactly sure.
I think, I think.
How it would work, but.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's so much simpler that I'm like, do we need to ask more questions about that? Cause we've had so much discussion about raising it, it's like, oh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure how they'll work, I, I don't see.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm curious, I'd, I'd like a little, I don't know, who will we talk to to get more information about that?
Well, Phil actually called the floodplain manager here.
That's Kyle.
About him, yeah, cause he, he, he was relaying, uh, Steve's concern about raising it four feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Kyle was the one that talked about the vents.
Well, we get to have him writing, you know.
It was over the phone.
I mean, it does, it does make things a whole lot simpler and cheaper, I would imagine, I mean, somewhat.
Yeah, you cut your walls down to four foot, instead of being eight.
I think at one, uh, uh, when everything's agreed upon and, and Mark does an RFP. Before we send it out, we can send it to the floodplain manager, showing exactly what we plan to do with the vents and everything in it.
Yeah.
And get him to sign off on it before we even send out a RFP.
And it's okay to have the salt at that, I mean, I know it's at that ground level now, but that, the, if that flooded, is that, that's not gonna adversely.
It's salted with the sand now, so. I mean, I don't think that's a, you put salt on the road, it rains, salt goes everywhere, so I don't know if that's a.
Hazardous.
Mood for it.
Right.
So you let me know what you wanna do on that, and.
Will you ever find out?
The other, I guess the other thing, Ed brought this up with you Sandy, I know you talked to Mark about, about the size, cause, um. If we are talking about sixty by a hundred, that's gonna be bigger than even the combined footprint that we have now.
Two or three hundred feet square feet.
Oh, no, more than that, I mean.
Is it, I thought I ca, I calculated it out and I.
Well, cause, um, according to, to, to this drawing anyway, the existing is fifty by eighty, is that's.
It's sixty by eighty.
But even, even so, that's, that's forty-eight hundred feet plus twelve by twenty-four, another two eighty-eight, so it's a little over five thousand feet, and the new one would be six thousand, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's bigger, I didn't, you know, I don't know if that's enough to, to, Kyle was concerned, we have to do this hydraulic soil analysis if it's bigger. I don't know how strict they are about that.
Yeah, and that's where that ten percent might come in, if we push ten percent over what it is now.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that would be.
I know there was talk about, we don't, it doesn't qualify for Act two fifty, because of everything that goes on. But that may be where they were talking to ten percent.
Yeah, I think, I think the ten percent.
That building is eight feet on the end, it's sixty by eighty, and ten percent bigger is eight feet, not, not.
Plus of the salt shed.
I think the ten, the ten percent thing was something that Jay brought up, and that was with Act two fifty. I think what Kyle brought up was like, if your footprint is, he just said, if it's bigger, he didn't give a figure, he said, if it's bigger, you need to do a hydraulic soil analysis. So I don't know if he mean, when he says, is it bigger, does that mean if it's a few hundred feet bigger, or if it's a lot bigger, I, I, you know, I think we'd need to maybe check with him.
Yeah, I mean, they could leave that up to Sandy or Phil.
I just, I just don't wanna be caught like, oh, we're doing this shed, and then after the fact, get, find that, we're supposed to do an analysis.
When you do the RFP, like Sandy said, said, we can do the RFP with a drawing, and. Cause like I said, your, your builders are gonna do your engineering drawings.
Exactly.
They're gonna give you the foundation print plans that they want, they're gonna give you the structural information that you want, only because every building is different. So, to get an RFP started, we need the dimensions, the vents, so.
Yeah.
I can draw, I can draw up something that may, may be crude, but I can make it so you have the, the vents, what we needed. If we, all I'll need to know is how many, and I think I can find that out pretty easily, but, I mean, as soon as you, like I said, you guys decide what you wanna do. I mean, the RFP is, you know, I wrote one up on a piece of paper.
Right, and we're thinking this, in this shed, this, the new shed, like, the salt's just gonna be there in one area, and the sand's gonna be, we don't have anything, we don't have to build a separate enclosure for the salt.
Isn't there's gonna be a concrete buffer between them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, he might have been talking just a couple, um, Jersey barriers or whatever, yeah, just to keep the salt separated.
Maybe just the same dimensions, I mean.
Yeah, it's all on one end.
One end, so, so you'd have to have it in a corner or something.
Yeah.
So what do we need to accomplish in order to be able to have Mark move ahead on the RFP?
Dimensions.
So get the dimensions?
Phil said he was actually gonna go down and measure the roof line.
I, I did.
Of the, of the sand shed right now, in the next few days, so, because I brought up this, um.
Did you already do that?
Hydraulic thing again to him today, so he's, you know, we talked about the ten percent and the hydraulic, and he said he wanted to go down and get a definite number. On the roof line, not so much where the posts are, cause he felt like the overhang.
Overhangs will give you.
Also include the storage.
It's sixty-three by eighty? And that's what we have right now?
The roof line.
Okay.
The, the building is sixty by eighty.
Okay.
I think it's fifty by eighty.
Off only on the ed side, so it doesn't overhang the front or back at all, and, uh, it's a foot and a half on either side, so.
Okay, and then I guess, just not, not to rethink everything, but, um, just having the, the walls, like, having the enclosed. Building versus this open thing that we have now, that's, that's something that, that we feel we need, like.
Well, we'd have to do, at least for the vents, have it enclosed, but we wouldn't have.
So, I guess that's the question is, is if we have a four-foot concrete wall with vents, do we need a wall above that?
They're talking to put steel on top, with a steel interior wall, to keep the safe, cause then you can.
Then you can pile more stuff.
Right.
Exactly.
So that's, that's.
Yes, that's what they're looking.
That's what they fill that with, an overflowing glass to happen here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we just need to get dimensions, and then once we have that.
You let me know what kind of building you want, you let me know the dimensions.
So we just need, if there's any constraint on size, we just need to, like, nail that down, right, and then, then we can decide.
Once we get that, I think we can now move ahead.
I think at some point, you're gonna need to get a project manager too, it's a huge job. You need to, somewhere along the way for a project manager.
Yes, so we need to talk about that.
Yeah, at some point, because there's a lot of moving parts to those.
Moving parts.
So it sounds like the, the hoop roof thing is, is a non-starter.
I think so.
But just wanted to keep in mind that, one of the questions that I asked for the, uh, remount power was. Although this is being, this remote net virtual metering is being phased out, RCPG will allow us to have it. Can we expand that system in the future if necessary? And the response back was, yes, we could, to, up to the fifteen KW, so we could potentially, if the town needs it. Five, ten, ten years down the road, whatever, twenty years down the road, we could potentially expand that, and it could go. On the roofs like we were talking about originally, if you have a solid roof as opposed to a hoop roof.
Right, yes.
And the other thing is, I did, while we were talking, I did look up the dimensions of the array for the ground mount, so it is fourteen by sixty-four. If it's a single row, and he said that if you go to the ground mount, you can do a double row, which would shorten it and, and widen it, so. Two row would be twenty-eight by thirty-two, so when we meet with Phil and Steve, we'll keep that in mind, because there may be a better way to situate that in there that meets there and meets there.
Okay. Just to have options.
Should stop thinking, but. If you were to raise that, put it to the way you were proposing it behind the shed, behind the top of the garage, if you were to raise that. Ten, fifteen feet off the ground. I'm thinking more for vehicle parking than for storage, because if you, you'll. Still have a little bit of storage behind the sand shed, or should say you'll have storage on the back and. Where the sand shed, or the salt shed is, and, and you have some other stuff back there, so you have storage for culverts, stuff there. And if you raise that up, so it's, you know, like I said, fifteen, twenty feet, or even fifty feet. Then your private vehicles can park under there to pick up, and you know, that type of thing, so it would, would free up that space beside the garage.
Unfortunately, with the south-facing array, the low end of the array.
Is in front.
Is in front, but we can, I don't know, I'll ask before I meet with, with Phil and Steve, I'll check back with Jim Paul.
I mean, it's a snow problem, but it's probably not, but you think of plows, they should be able to keep that plowed out.
We'll see how high we can take it up too.
Okay, okay.
I'm good, I'm going back on return, see you, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Were you here for, um, an agenda item?
Nothing on the agenda, no.
Okay, did you have a public comment?
I've, something, I, you're Sandy Switzer, right?
Yes.
You've talked a couple of times, I'm Michael Welch, I live right down the street down here, um, and stuff.
The noise?
Yeah, I've got a neighbor, seventeen, across back street, on a weekly basis, cranks his music up so loud, you could hear it inside your house when your windows are all closed. I just put brand-new windows in last year, so I guess my windows are probably a little more quieter than they would normally be, be, and, uh. This is a weekly basis, so I've talked to Sandy a couple of times about it, I mean, I've called the police on him several times. And he just doesn't get the hint, he just, nothing, um, and stuff, I don't know if this is anything. That pertains with you guys, I mean, I know there is a noise ordinance involved, but I looked it up. The only time thing I saw was for like, construction, and I think that's like nine PM. It seems when it gets darker, he turns in the music up louder, unfortunately, all, all of us in our house, there's, there's three of us living in our house. We have bedrooms at the end, on the north end of the house, which is, and then his house is right up on the street, right above. His, he's got a door that opens up to the, his backyard, but it isn't much of a backyard, it's a big giant hill, and stuff, but I swear he puts a speaker outside. You can hear it through the entire neighborhood, I mean, it's just intense, and, you know, I'm at my wit's end. It's, like I said, it's a weekly basis, we all go to bed at like nine o'clock in our house. And we're all up early and leaving for the day, and it's just.
Is there any time, um, frame on the noise ordinance?
The only thing I saw for a timeframe of the noise ordinance was for construction noise, and that's supposed to be done at nine o'clock, I didn't see any other.
But nothing for just general?
In general, like, says ten o'clock, you know, and I don't, we stay up till nine, he can do whatever he wants with the music up to nine o'clock, but after that, I expect it. To be turned down, I mean.
I think, I think the noise ordinance has, uh, a decibel reading, uh. Within a hundred and fifty feet is appropriate, so documenting stuff, you know, is. I would think it would be a good idea, and if you had a, something that you could go there and say, he's at eighty decibels. This is, uh, it goes against the ordinance, uh, maybe the sheriff's department could do something about that.
Yeah, like, I assume you have other neighbors that would like, back you up on this?
Yeah, I think Sandy says, I'm not the only one playing here.
It's very common for.
Lady next to him, Sue, I don't know her last name, who works at the library, her house has to vibrate when he's playing his music.
Sue. Are you next to her?
She's right behind me.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he's.
So you're on Taff Terrace here.
Yeah.
And you're next to her?
He's next to her.
That way?
Yeah, I could literally throw a baseball at his house, fine. I lived here twenty years, never had any problems, like, the neighborhood's always been quiet, just.
Have you spoken to him?
I haven't, no, I really didn't wanna get into it with it.
Is it the fairly new construction on Prospect Street?
Yeah, it's, it was the old brown house that I think the people just walked away from, he bought it, and then the president's fixing it up, but I don't give a damn about the construction and the stuff.
Maybe, maybe talking to him would do good, but I would think that, that the police would go there, who did you call?
State police, I've talked to the, I've had the sheriff go to his house, I've had the state police.
They've already been there then?
Go several times.
Okay, so it's not gonna do it good for you.
No, I don't think so, I don't, I don't think he's gonna listen, he won't listen to the cops, I mean, why?
It looks like what you're talking about fits under prohibited noises under, um, section four, six, oh, three, A.
Yeah, radios and other sound.
Radios and other sound-producing devices, but that's on trucks.
I'm just reading here, yeah.
Yes. And then there's noise in general, any noise which is deemed objectionable because of volume frequency, or beep. And which is not muffled or otherwise controlled, so there seems to be, if, if we have some more, we do have other complaints on this, correct?
And, um, after I spoke most recently to Michael about this, I contacted the sheriff, gave him another copy of the ordinance. And they were going to visit him, the deputy did suggest, and it's gonna be on your next agenda. That you consider revising the noise ord, uh, the noise ordinance to put times in there.
Okay.
So you could say after such and such a time at night.
So, say after that.
But the way it is now, it's anytime.
Right.
It's the only time limit I saw, I mean, I read it, was for construction that hasn't.
Yeah, that, that is one thing, but the noise ordinance is for anytime.
Right, yes.
So, why?
Because it says noise in general.
Why make it weaker?
Well, there you go.
Because that sounds like it, it's already against this ordinance, just in what you've described.
It's a weekly basis, the noise is a couple times a week, but mostly it's about one, one night a week.
Does the sheriff need like, to hear it happening before he could like, issue a fine or something like that?
We have multiple complaints on this, and there was precedence in this being an issue, and it's not just one person, it's several.
Does it mention the decibels?
No, it says plainly audible at a distance of a hundred and fifty feet.
Audible?
Audible at a distant, plainly audible at a distance of a hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty feet, yeah. I don't know.
In any noise which is deemed objectionable because of volume, frequency, or beep, and which is not muffled or otherwise controlled. So that is a prohibited noise, and I mean, it fits because of volume and frequency, and it not being controlled.
Problem is that the constable will be here on duty at that particular time, in order for them to be able to.
And it says for.
That would be the important part, that you do it if that's the problem. I, I've heard you have to call the sheriff before ten o'clock, cause otherwise the employee's left and he's not there anymore. And if you don't, if the sheriff can't do it, then they say they call, they tell you to call the state police.
So it says here, for evidence that creation of permitting or operation of any of the above sets, instruments, devices, or vehicles. Causing said noise in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance of a hundred and fifty feet from, I would say, say a residence.
I bet you, uh, sometimes if you went just out this back door here, the town office, you could hear it.
Within a hundred and fifty feet from a building, structure, or vehicle from which noise emanates shall be prima facie evidence. Of a nuisance and a violation of this ordinance.
Well, I can see, he's by the way to get that weekly basis.
The next time it happens, if you can take your phone and make an audio recording from your, from inside your house.
Maybe a video, so that way you can see where you're standing.
Yes, make a video recording of it, cause I think what we need is evidence.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there's provisions in there for a fine, but to, to levy that fine, does the sheriff or something need?
To do that.
To, to actually see it happen, or?
What you could also do is draft a letter, if you wanna authorize Kathy to sign it, to this, uh, homeowner, saying. We've got multiple complaints about, um, possible violation of the nor, ordinance, we could. Put the noise ordinance in with the letter and say, you know, if this continues.
We can do that.
I think it's a really good idea.
We're gonna be issuing fines for violating.
Say, signing.
He can always, we can, he can always request to be, meet with the select board if he objects to the letter, so.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a good idea.
That works for me, I mean, that's kinda what I was looking for, so.
I mean, I think that would be a first step, but then, I would say if you can collect some evidence, and if. If your neighbors can also collect some evidence as well, that will only help with this, okay?
Okay.
Like that you can hear it from multiple sides.
Exactly.
Oh, you could, I'm sure.
So if we have the proof.
So if you have the proof, we get like, several videos from residents there, surrounded by this, that this is occurring.
I quite often run into Sue when she's out gardening, so, 'cause she's right, you know, her backyard's connected, so.
Yes.
We had, uh, concerns about, uh, True Temper, uh,
Yep.
putting on a second shift, and the, the owners there went and did get a instrument that measures decibels, and I don't know how much that costs, but it might not be.
You might be able to download an app on your phone, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's true.
Probably.
That's very possible.
Maybe that's how we did it, for all I know.
Yeah.
It might be, you could download an app on your phone, maybe, measure the decibels.
That might be, investigate that, huh?
Let's start, let's start with the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Nice t-shirt.
Thanks.
Correct name?
I didn't, I.
Testing music?
Oh, yes, nice t-shirt. Okay, moving on, we are on to property tax sale. So a date has been set for a property tax sale of May first, twenty twenty five. Um, there is a property that is going to be on sale. It's highly likely that the amount that's owed will be paid, paid prior to the sale. Historically, the select board sends a board member to serve the sale, and on rare occasions to bid on the property in the event that there are no bidders. Does someone want to attend the tax sale on behalf of the town, and does that person have the authority to bid if there are no bidders?
Is, is we printed, uh, do we know when it, when it is?
It's on May first, twenty twenty five.
May first, right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'll be upstairs.
Nine twenty five?
Oh, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, time hasn't been set yet.
The time has not been set yet.
Okay.
It'll be ten or eleven.
Either ten or eleven, it's on Thursday.
It's here and not at the property?
It'll be upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs.
Okay.
Do, I mean, do, do we normally do that? I mean, that, just, would we acquire the property if?
We usually just have somebody come to the auction, only once have we bid, because we knew nobody was gonna bid, and we needed to clean up the property, but it becomes a big problem for the town. It was the, you know, it was the one oh three property, we ended up owning it, and they, before we, during the transition, they moved trailers on there and everything, and this, it just became a huge problem. It was a safety issue. We'd rather not bid on them, but it's good to have somebody from the town there to show that we're gonna bid on it if nobody else does.
Exactly.
You don't have to rewarn it, I mean, that's what, just to save, uh, rewarn it, another thing, you know, I mean, if we're gonna tax sale, you, you gotta get some bidders, you gotta put it out again, and, and, uh, if the town bids a dollar, or whatever the back taxes is, you don't have to do that, and you regroup and say, do we wanna own this house, you know?
'Cause most of the time, those people hang.
Was listed on the May first, Wallingford Pond Road?
Um, yes, it is, it is that property.
What is it?
Wallingford Pond.
Yes, it's the property on Wallingford Pond Road. Yep.
Most of the time it doesn't get to that point.
That's why, that's why Sandy will probably be paid. Um, okay, so is there someone who, if need be, could, could attend the sale on the first?
I could go if no one else wants to.
Or get bid happy.
And are we okay giving Glenn authority to bid if there are no bidders?
You could say no.
We can say no.
No, uh, I move we do, yeah.
How much you want me to bid?
You would have to bid the minimum, whatever is owed for back taxes and attorneys.
And then you gotta figure out what to do with it, if you do.
And that's all you have to do. After that, my responsibility.
And really, you don't have to stay there, 'cause you're not gonna bid above it, so you can say, I bid the minimum, walk out.
Yeah, it's not gonna take that much time.
You're done.
And again, I will read the sentence, it is highly likely that the amounts will be paid prior to sale.
Yeah.
So are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
Highly likely you won't have to do.
Right, okay. We are now moving on to public works, works mutual aid agreement and designees. We have included the public works and mutual aid agreement. Nearly every town in the county participates in this arrangement through Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Um, road commissioner Phil Baker would be the designated request, or respondent request, and road foreman Steve Lanfair would be the alternate. Do we agree, do we approve the agreement and designees, and authorize myself to sign?
Is this an annual thing?
Yes.
We've done it before, yeah, I thought, I can't remember that meeting, but.
Yes.
Yeah, I move we proceed with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second map.
Okay. Sounds like we have consensus? Okay. Okay, and we are on to Boy with the Boot update.
Hi, Gary.
Hey.
You lasted that long, congratulations.
Um, I just watched a lot of, quite a few of the board meetings, and some of the conversation that's been taking place about the boy in the boot, um, and I know that some of the conversation has been to make a replica of it, and put the replica down on the street, and bring the boy in the boot, and put it upstairs, or whatever, and I just, um, I'm kinda here to, to show that I'm not in support at all of that program. I think the original boy in the boot should go back in the corner, just like it went back, like it was there a hundred and twenty seven years ago, and the person that purchased it put it out on the corner because he wanted it to be there. Um, I know that in, well, I've been with that for seventy three years, I know probably it's been two times, I know it's been, been alive, maybe three, one time they just took the boot.
The boot?
Um, I know you always are liable or open up to have somebody doing some damage to it, but, you know, three times in a hundred and twenty seven years isn't a bad batting average, even though anything is bad. There are a lot of different options that can happen with the boy in the boot, um, it doesn't have to necessarily be taken out of that, um, location every year. I mean, I've seen a lot of different places where they build boxes, build boxes and put them over the top of them, and secure it, so you don't have to lift it off there every year if you didn't have to. That kinda saves any damage that might happen there, whether it be a metal box or a wooden box, and just drain the water and leave it in place, you could do that. Um, so like I said, I just, um, and I haven't donated to the boy in the boot thing, and the reason I haven't donated to it, and I tell you, the year before last, I painted the boy in the boot, I have, I have a great deal of fondness for it. But I haven't done that because I just want, I refuse to support building some replica of it, and sticking some plastic thing down there or whatever, and taking the real boy in the boot out of town, um, that's one of the reasons why.
I think this one's gonna be less breakable, too, because it's gonna be filled with epoxy.
Yeah, and I think, I, I, I even find that a bit of a, I think you're just gonna over, make that overly heavy, I think it's.
It's maybe not repairable without doing that.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that, I think they can braise it just as they've done it any other time before, but anyways, I just, there it is.
Wow, okay.
But the other part of my whole thing that I wanted to pass on, too, is, and I think some money that should be shared with this boy in the boot, is, and I brought this up before when I painted it, um, they really have to sandblast that tub that it's in, and paint that, and do some serious work to the tub, because the tub's in worse shape than the boy in the boot is, to be perfectly honest with you. And you can't just make a, you know, polish that thing up and put it back out there, and stick it on top of that.
I, I would argue with you about the, um, condition of the boy in the boot to, to that base, but I'm writing down because you're right.
Well, just certain things, plenty of money for it.
There's a lot of cracks in that, too.
That I can see, so, um, if you're gonna do the project, do it all. Like I said, I don't necessarily see where the, the boy in the boot even has to come out of there, even though there's a fine that it does, um, but I certainly am not in agreement with putting some sort of a replica down there, um, and not having the real boy in the boot on the corner.
I think the concern about, um, putting the boy in the boot out is, it's, it keeps sustaining more and more, um, damage, and, and the concern that it would be completely destroyed.
Yeah.
I think that's where the idea of putting out a replica and storing the original upstairs came from, is just, is just to further protect it.
Yeah, those, those, absolutely, years ago when I painted it, there was absolutely no damage on that boy and just boot at all, zero. Um, so it was back at a hundred percent, and it can stay at a hundred percent, it can be repaired, it can be at a hundred percent. Um, like I said, I think that was really a big fluke, what just happened, um, a year and a half ago, when that happened to it, I, I would like to believe that's never gonna happen again, but still, you never know what's gonna happen, but.
Exactly.
Like I said, I just wanted, I, I'd seen the rumblings of putting some kind of a replica down there, and I just am not in agreement with it, and I just wanted to share it.
Because I think part of it was because of how much it was gonna weigh, too, that it was gonna make it too hard to move it.
Yeah.
But boxing is a different, was a good option.
And boxing would make it so that we didn't have to move it.
Right.
Wouldn't have to move it.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments to Mr.?
We're gonna get just an update on what the project, what the state of the project is right now?
I think we have an update here, um.
I think.
On words app?
People would like to know what Sandy has shared with us.
So I can read what's written here?
All right.
Okay, um, we have Wayne Jones, he's on Route one oh three in East Wallingford, he's working on the boy in the boot statue. Wayne has decades of experience of working with high-end and complicated projects. Um, he has stripped the statue of all layers of paint, he's repaired most of the numerous cracks, he's replacing tubes with the water circulation. Um, he reported that, uh, he's working on finding an exact composite to fill the statue that will hold all the parts together, because it is pretty seriously cracked, and it, it needs something to hold, hold it all together, um, that won't deteriorate the existing zinc materials. The statue has always been hollowed, but the composite will make it a solid piece. Probably the solution to it is thinking about some sort of box to put over it, so it would not have to be moved, because it probably couldn't be moved, once, once we have it set. Um, he cannot give a timetable yet for completion, as the composite material has yet to be identified. And right now, it's being repaired, all major breaks and separations, repair cracks, replace tubing for water circulation, reinforce structure with rods, then fill with epoxy to stabilize dripping, and repaint statue on base. And that's the work that he's looking to accomplish with the boy.
He was gonna find out what the material was.
Yes, he hasn't found it out yet, he's still working on identifying an appropriate composite material that will hold everything thing together, but won't deteriorate the existing zinc materials in the boy.
It's, it's not solderable, I don't think, the metal, weldable.
It was before.
Huh?
It was before, it's been broken and repaired before by, by braising it or welding it, so.
Um, I'll just comment that, um, I've had personal experience with Mr. Jones, and he does, he's just incredibly creative, meticulous, and.
You can throw talented in there.
Very talented. If anyone can do this, I, I trust him.
And I believe from everything I've heard that we have it in very good hands.
Um, the que, I have some questions, um, he provided an insurance quote for repairs of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we've had, um, insurance reimbursement.
Yep.
For.
Everything but the thousand dollars.
The thousand dollar deductible.
Yes.
The donations for the repair, um, how much has come in?
I mean, that was Julie, Julie would know that.
That's over two thousand.
Could the, that money be used to sandblast the base and paint it before we were still?
I think there's no reason why it couldn't be.
That's a good idea.
Right. Well, part of us, before the discussion was if we could not, if it wasn't gonna be able to be put back out there, was using that money also.
For the replica.
Yes.
Or whatever we would need to.
But depending on what we decide, and if we go with Gary's suggestion of building.
It could go that way.
Building a box around it, so it no longer needed to be moved.
Yeah. So, the fund that we set up, that voters approved, this past March, said repair, maintenance, you know, restoration.
So that goes.
If we decide not to go that route, but it's all part of it, so maintenance.
So if we decide that we wanna do the sandblast and the paint of the base, we could use our money that's been donated for that?
And it's also good to keep some, too, for any repairs in the future.
Maybe sandblasting isn't the best way to go with that, but somebody, a professional.
I'm sure that a professional will come up with a good recommendation for us.
But it definitely has a lot of cracks in that face, too.
Yes.
You know, that, that thing just sits, sits there, and you lift it up, and in order to make it so you can't do that, you'd have to fasten it, and that would require something that would be non-leak, you know, you have to, otherwise the water would leak out, but, uh.
Yep. But we could definitely look into it.
Yeah.
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 There's epoxies and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't even know if that's circulating, or is that just water going down the drain? Where does that water go?
I think the water recirculates, so we're not using thousands of gallons of water.
Yes, I'm pretty sure it recirculates.
It recirculates, but, but if it evaporates, you gotta turn the water on to get some more in there.
I don't know how much evaporation there is.
Well, it would be, you'd have to.
They turn the water on when they put it in place here, and I just, I've never known a man to turn it off or anything.
Right.
So how do we move this forward so that the base is ready when the boy is ready, and we can put it all together and it's back?
Well, I think, I, I don't know if we have to, um, wait and see what Wayne finds for a composite to put in before we could, could there be extra cost, or is that pretty much where we're set with?
I think, well, the, the whole fountain area, then, we, we'd need to get, I don't know if that would be something Wayne would wanna work on, or we get estimates from other people.
I don't think so, I, I think.
So we might wanna get estimates on what it would cost, and the, and we don't know yet what it would cost, so.
No idea.
Would Wayne be a good person, a point person to start with, to?
I can ask him if he wants to take a look at it.
Just to take a look, it's not necessarily him doing the work, but just taking a look and.
Oh, yeah, who wouldn't?
And guiding us in the right direction.
Yeah, he might have suggestions on it.
That sounds good.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing is, um, Wallingford House, uh, the parent company, offered to host a security camera that would be focused on the fountain. Do we wanna pursue that? I mean, there's one on the market, but it was shut off the night of the incident, so that would be another option, if their camera is functional.
I would say if Wallingford House is willing to look into it, I.
No, they're not, they're willing to have us put our camera on the side of their building.
We got one.
They're not gonna do the research and the work and the.
Do we need to talk to the market first to see if they have any plans of?
I mean, it's their, their own private.
So, gotcha.
You can do whatever they want.
So, for us, if, do we want to look into how much a purchase we can would be to put on Wallingford House?
I have, uh, concerns about putting public something on private property.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
And, uh, how, how do we monitor it, how do we take care of it?
Yeah.
Uh, where does the feed go, um?
Yeah, public funds on the private building.
There's a lot more logistics to it, putting it over there.
So that's the question.
I wonder if from that, from just putting something on a pole there in the corner with wifi, you couldn't put a feed right here into town, huh?
Well, I would put, put a game camera in a tree.
Uh, but, but you're not gonna get a, you ain't gonna get feed from a game camera.
But to put it on the pole?
But if you, I don't know, if they do it, like, you couldn't get a.
Oh, there's, there's many options.
Yeah, wifi, and then it's on a public pole, which you, you just have to get Green Mountain Power to say, you can put a camera there, point it down in that direction, and.
point it down in that direction and, and the signal would come into the, be recorded here in the town hall. I mean, that's the kind of system I would look at, rather than, or you want to put it in somebody else's building or somebody else's park or something.
Yep.
I wanted to put it on, on traffic light, you should have asked that guy if he was at that.
I asked him, when it was damaged, I asked if there was a light or alarm, a system there. No, they didn't, no, on that intersection, so, but I did ask about that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. We are moving on to recreation subcommittee appointments. Tori Benrin, Kater Hearn, Imogene Church, and Gabby Forrest all want to return, and.
Well, I'm sure you skipped, you combined things.
I did.
It's okay.
Okay, because I was looking here, yes, and I skipped, I totally did. Okay, recreation subcommittees Monica Delorme, Michael Luzader, Barbara Bucci, Naomi Bombadear Wilson, Todd Galliano, and Heather Johnson are members of the Wallingford Day Recreation Subcommittee. Shannon Pitlick, Carolyn Benrin, Ralph Nims, and Denise Eddy are members of the Recreation Facilities Committee. Do we want to reappoint all for another year?
Yes.
Okay.
By consensus?
By consensus, are we good with those reappointments?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, we are. Now, Justin Jenkins and Carolyn were select board liaisons for the facilities committee. Now that Justin is off the select board, does another member want to join?
We just had our, uh, meeting right before this and we were discussing, since we're ending the bigger part of the project.
Yes.
Of maybe downsizing the side of the committee.
Oh, so we're good with.
To potentially three members.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't fully decided in that meeting, but it was something that brought up that we may, or even change the, the way the meeting is, the committee is. So I don't know if we wanna wait or if somebody wants to throw their name in the hat, but, uh.
Why don't we wait and see what the committee comes up with? Is everyone good with that? Wait and see?
Is that what committees can decide that themselves, like how big they wanna be?
This was kind of, yeah.
Yes.
It'd be a proposal, because we're on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep.
So, um, about the whole committee with what's going on with it, so it'd be proposed that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, Elton Lake Concession employees, Tori Benrin, Kater Hearn, Imogene Church, and Gabby Forrest, and Autumn Farmer.
Yep.
What?
Is there typo on there? It's Birch, not Church.
That's right, Birch. Of course it's Birch.
I know.
Imogene Birch, Gabby Forrest, and Autumn Farmer all want to return to work this summer at, at concessions. This is something that doesn't happen often. These are all experienced, excellent employees. Um, do we agree to rehire? They will be paid minimum wage.
Yes.
That is a yes. Liquor and tobacco license application.
They're all in front of you.
What's that?
They're all in front of you.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I think we're saying, I'm just gonna take a look and see, yes.
Ten million dollars.
Yes to the licenses.
Not that I would buy any of their beer.
Okay, is there an item or topic that we'd like to see added for any upcoming agenda? Hearing none.
No executive session.
Right, no executive session. Do we have select board comments and concerns this evening?
I would just like to explain myself more about how I voted about advertising down the, and, and what there's fundraising and there's selling advertisement and, and I just want it to be different. I don't wanna go into John Cuseller or, you know.
Yep, we got you.
And say, and say, uh, you can have a, if you, if you give us five hundred dollars, we'll give you eight feet, you know, as a come on. I think, I think what it needs to be is.
It's a thank you.
We'll, we, we need this much money and anything you could do would help and then, and then thank them.
Yeah.
You know, that is a proper way. We're not a business. We don't make money.
Right.
What we do is we take money by law from people who own property and if they don't give it to us, we sell their house, you know, so that's enough.
Okay.
You know, staying with that.
Thank you for your explanation. I don't think we have any other business to go over this evening. I will entertain a motion.
So move, adjourn.
So we have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.